So do we have to wait for? No, to for his, uh, him to be on, be on?
Yeah, seven thirty.
I'm gonna wait to seven thirty anyway, but sometimes they're not ready yet. Oh, it's my fault. It's like I'm, it's. It's like I'm home. It's my fault. I did turn off.
Can't, we can talk about stuff, we just can't vote on it.
Right.
Just can't, can't vote on it.
Right. So, so we do, so.
We just can't vote on it. Why don't we just go through?
Right, I agree. I know that's fact. Well, it's seven thirty and seems how we're kind of live. I'd like to say that the Parks and Rec Commission is waiting a moment or two for another person to make quorum to show up. Other than that, we will be off record. So. Well, I wanted to have a conversation with you guys if I could, but we can't vote on anything, we can't do any business. Can we have any conversation?
Just talk?
Yeah, I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the Parks and Rec Commission for January eleventh, seven thirty. Would we please rise and do the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic. Please have the roll call.
George Kay.
Here.
Shrinivasa Chali Kanda, Genevieve Corse.
Here.
James Hennessy.
Present.
Michael Kelly, Kristin Kozkowski, Toby Lewis.
Here.
William Nowak, Renee Powell.
Here.
Miguel Pirano.
Here.
Dan Rosende, Erica Evans.
Here.
Lisa Manili. Also in attendance, Molly Keys, John Caldwell, and Leo Marjaloni.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of last month. Is it seconded?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 I abstain because I wasn't here. Motion carries. What?
Usually if one person abstains, you have to go through and say individually.
Okay.
Yes, no.
So, call the vote, is it called, yeah, ready?
Yes.
George?
Yep.
Miguel?
Abstain that wasn't here.
Abstain?
Yes.
Okay, it's a simple majority, motion carries. Thank you, Erica. At this point, we'll look for any public input. Is there any public input? Any public input? Seeing none? I would like to report of the council liaison, Erica.
Sure, thanks. I just did want to report that HRC and Mayor's Day of Service is coming up there on the sixteenth. They're doing a fundraiser, collecting some backpacks for adults as well as gloves, mittens, hats. There's a collection spot at the community center. They also created an Amazon wishlist so that if people don't want to have to go to the store and purchase an item and have to deliver it to the community center, you can go right on and order an item to be delivered and donated. And then on, on, actually on Monday, there will be a group that'll be in Hartford working with Officer Barrett to distribute and donate the items. So if anyone has any items to donate, through Monday, the sixteenth, there will be a collection spot at the community center. And then I did also want to follow up on the question that I asked last time. The strategic planning committee is working on a survey for the community. And their ask was, does Park and Rec have one to three questions that you would like included in that survey? That would go out to their broad group. Of course, Park and Rec is working on their own survey. So this would be three questions could be kind of tap into that area or it could be something completely separate, something over encompassing, what you might want to include on the strategic planning survey.
Super, thank you. Anything else?
So do we have any suggestions for those questions for the strategic planning survey? So last, last meeting I had asked, I kind of threw it out at the last meeting in the moment and I knew I was kind of putting everyone on the spot, so asked that at this meeting, you know, we could have that conversation and provide those questions.
I was thinking that maybe we could ask the community how they feel about the park and recs and what kind of like building they expect to be made because it's going to be their input that either builds something or keeps it where it is. I mean, I know everyone wants a pool and this and that, but you can't have any of that if your park and recs doesn't have a home.
Talking about like the actual structure, like what that building might look like eventually?
Right, right.
James?
Yeah, I was trying to think of something along the lines of what, what is the one or two amenities or programs that we don't have that you would want to see served by this new center? Because I think we have to be able to sell it as a growth and development opportunity versus just replacing what we have now. You have to be able to sell it as some, an improvement for everyone, so that's what I'm thinking of.
Thank you, James. You look like about to head to Kennedy.
That was essentially what I was, I was trying to see if I could add anything to what he said. That was essentially, I think, you know, starting the wishlist of the community, I think is a good idea and kind of keep it broad for this type of questionnaire. Do you know the, I guess the format, like is it just going to be like open ended questions? Do they want checkboxes or?
That's a great question. So I will give them these and if they need to be like narrowed in on, I'm sure that I can come back to you and we can kind of figure that out, whether it's like options or open ended paragraphs. I'm not really sure. I do know there was conversation at the council meeting too because there's a third group doing, maybe, I can't remember what the third group is, but there's three different groups planning to do surveys for the town right now. So the concern was, are we overloading the community with surveys? And the thought was, you know, we, we look at timing these out and spacing them out in a way that's appropriate so that it's not like this overwhelming amount of surveys coming through. So I think with strategic planning has their own focus, but maybe that one happens, you know, in a couple month window. Maybe the park and rec one happens within its own window and then there was a third one which I can't remember off the top of my head that maybe that one happens in its own window too, but it's kind of like this, everything's happening at the same time. So there was that kind of question or concern. So that, something to keep in mind as the survey for Park and Rec moves forward too.
Is there a timeframe of when this survey you're talking about is going to be sent out? What, what's the target date of?
For strategic planning?
Yeah.
It was a very similar window to what Park and Rec was talking about, was using like late spring, summer, fall, kind of that same window. So I think that there'll just have to be some, some conversation and coordination between the different groups.
I would like to suggest as a question to add in as a fourth, and you can pick the best three or we can pick the best three, is that we need to change our perspective because we met as a subcommittee meeting the other night and we talked about things. A lot of it is, is what do I think, what, what does the individual citizen want for themselves? And rather, I'd like to ask the question of, what do you think your neighbor would benefit from? And what do you think would be best for your community? Get it out of the self, the, the individual people and try and steer the community into focusing on what's best for the neighbor. Because, you know, my kids are grown and gone out of the school and so my needs are different. However, I want, I want what's best for, you know, what's best for my neighborhood, what's best for my, my street, my town, my people. So it'd be good if we could ask questions to steer people in that direction and have them not be so introspective on themselves. Because I think that's the direction we go to, everyone, you know, I want this, I want that.
It's a great point. I mean, you think about the schools and how many people supported the schools.
Exactly.
Seniors, people who don't have children. I mean, it, it was a community support. So I think that's a really fair point is to look at like the overall community needs, not just individual needs, so.
Although if we get a high enough turnout from all demographics as we're expecting to, then we're just going to hear from all of our neighbors.
I have a question, Toby. Or, is, one of the, the things, one of the goals of the strategic planning committee, I'm on the committee, and was that, what a concern, like you said, Erica, was, you know, to try to avoid some redundancy with all these other surveys that are coming out.
Same people giving all the same answers.
Right, exactly. So when we, you know, when we talked about reaching out to the other departments, you know, with some questions to include in our survey, was to try to have more of an all encompassing, like forward looking question as, you know, as strategic planning is obviously looking forward into the future, into a five or 10 year plan. So what, as a resident, are, you know, are you looking to see from Park and Rec into that, into that long term? As opposed to, you know, what do you want now or what are you enjoying now from Park and Rec? But what, you know, what are we envisioning into the, into the future, into the, you know, to the short or long term future of, of Park and Rec to, to service the, the community? So that it doesn't become a redundant, a redundant question that they're already going to answer from our survey or from our strategic planning survey and therefore not discourage, you know, participation because, well, I already answered that question in this survey, so I don't need to answer this other one, so.
I think that's a challenge of all the groups is, is we've had surveys in the past and the percentage of the population is so miniscule. You know, everyone wants this, but all 300 people that participated in the survey wanted something in particular, but that's not a big enough representation of 27,000 people. So, good luck.
Do you know, Miguel, the, how those questions are being formatted for the strategic planning?
We're literally breaking down that down as we speak. We're, you know, going into the format as to how, when, and we're talking to a, to a, an individual that's helping us put together the plan itself and how we're going to compartmentalize it down into, into a survey.
And to clarify, th- this question that we're talking about right now or questions, are they going into the same survey as strategic planning or?
My understanding to ask, and I don't know if they talked about this last meeting, but what I was asked to do was to bring some ideas to strategic that they might include because I know we are very narrow focused, right? We are focused on Park and Rec there, like Miguel said, the, all the departments, like that one is very wide and has a lot of areas. So they're trying to figure out what does this department want?
Right, so is this just basically trying to figure out what to include in that strategic planning survey?
Right, because the strategic plan is gonna, is gonna involve every single department of, of the town and, yeah, and just what to include of what the community wants of this particular department. But at the same time, not be redundant to what we're gonna put in our, in our Park and Rec survey as well.
Okay. And as far as timing, what was, what's kind of, I know you want it today. You wanted it last, last month.
Oh, you wanna, do you?
When, when is this question going to be published in whatever format it's?
I don't think at least until late spring.
Right.
Okay.
So we can review the minutes and look at the questions we've just asked and say, wow, we don't like that one. And we could give it, give you other feedback?
That's, yeah, absolutely.
Good, okay. Anything else, Erica?
Yep, so next meeting we'll review and approve the questions to be sent to the strategic planning then. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Erica. I do not see Lisa Manili here for the Board of Ed report. So we'll pass through that. Special reports from tasks?
We didn't really have any special reports or tasks listed as we submitted our agenda prior to meeting with our subcommittee, but if this would be a good time maybe to go over what we met on, on Monday?
Please.
Yeah. I believe, so Leah has put a summary that she typed up after our meeting in everyone's packets regarding what we discussed at the subcommittee meeting. If, if anyone who is there would like to speak on it really, however, we just, you know, there's Genevieve, Toby, Michael Kelly, myself, and Shawna was also in attendance, who is a recreation supervisor. And we began the discussion of the online survey as we want to update it and really move towards trying to get a campaign going to have a new park and rec facility. Obviously, we mentioned the dream facility and then we talked about more of a realistic idea of what we want out of a recreation facility. And then we talked about some big picture items on, you know, how should we structure the survey, what other tools would be beneficial, and the methods of delivery, and also a timeline. I mean, honestly, strategic planning has a huge survey that they're going to be coming out with. We're going to be doing 20 questions max because that's really the engagement they're going to get from someone. People aren't going to fill out surveys longer. I mean, it's a dream to think that they would, but they won't. And then also, I know we discussed having additional meetings for in-person engagement and then having people come to our meetings for public input, if anyone else wants to speak really on what we've discussed.
I think you covered it all pretty well. Any questions? We're meeting again, I think, January thirtieth.
Yep, yeah, because really, you know, as this wrap up alluded to, some of the questions that we ended the night with were, with a new facility, what percentage of waitlist families would be served if the expansion was possible? What is, and is there a minimum number of voters if the referendum is not during the presidential election? So if we're going through this campaign, what's the minimum number of voters for us to pass this? And what are some questions that neighboring communities ask the residents when preparing for a new facility? So we're going to compile some of this information so that way when we meet on June thirtieth, we can talk about these questions as well as kind of firm up a timeline and maybe outline a survey along with some public input and community engagement sessions to do throughout the spring and summer. We're going to be highlighting it in our Park and Rec magazine under the director's message.
Toby, I have a question.
Go ahead, George.
That, you have the $7 million to up, update Orchard Hill. Is that, does that just, is that just thrown out there or is that?
Correct, yeah. I mean, I'm sure the costs are going to continue to go up, to be honest.
Okay.
It's full ADA compliance, all that sort of stuff.
Right.
So that doesn't give you anything?
No, it's just what we need to do to.
To usable permanently.
Correct, just to be compliant, yep.
All right.
And as far as, so as far as the timeline, you know, I think we're looking for the spring, summer program that goes out. We're going to start off with advertising community input sessions. And so just for the commission, I think we're going to try and hopefully get everyone involved in those and just kind of doing some listening sessions, but also possibly some presentations from neighboring communities who have gone through this upgrade of their parks and rec facilities. So that's, I think what we kind of landed on is the first stage, so we can listen. And then for the fall programming that goes out, that is when we will plan to have the actual survey questions published and ready to go. And so that's going to be kind of stage two in that we're going to have, you know, 10 to 20 solid questions and we're going to, it's going to basically be a full fledged campaign to get this out, get responses. And then I guess stage three is going to be utilizing responses to really work with the community and convince them of what we, what we can do and what we need from them.
Anyone else? Thank you, Kennedy. Report on Open Space Task Force, George?
Uh, we didn't have a meeting this month.
Okay. Do you argue a meeting next month?
If there's no, if there's nothing on the agenda coming forward, we don't have meetings.
Okay, fair enough. Molly, report at Parks and Rec.
Yep. So in terms of CIP, we are starting to look at 2023, 2024 projects that could be put forth. We're hoping that, based on our master plan, that we could have a potential to fund another 200,000 at least for a CIP project, but we are waiting on the CIP's committee for the new ranking system and trying to figure out what the order of approval will be for the projects. So I'm hoping that next month, we're really going to be able to talk about the master plan project that we can work with if there is funding available for it this year. In terms of our master plan project this year, John will speak more on it in a few minutes, but we did get that 200,000 to update the lighting at Ryce Street and we are moving forward with that project. And it should be set for the spring, which will be nice. In terms of walk-in wheelways, we have been working really diligently with Barton and Logice to move forward on finalizing that first phase of the crosstown trail. The whole project's going to be $8 million for the full crosstown trail. So we figured the best approach is to go with phases. The first phase that was identified is the easiest to get all the permitting as well as it's the path of least resistance, I will say, in terms of getting approvals with abutters and property owners. So we've been working with the town to discuss the few wetlands permitting that we have to work through. We're moving along with that and we've made significant progress with EverSource to gain the permissions through the right of ways. And now we're kind of, we just got also the letters approved to kind of bring out to the few abutters that we have on this first phase and also for letters of support so we can start to talk to neighboring communities, you know, state representatives and such to get more support for this trail. And I am talking at the end of this week with our representative from Barton and Logice to see what we can do for potential funding for the next round of Recreation Trails Grant because they have about 500 to 600,000 that they could fund potentially through these grant processes which would help us get that first phase up and moving. The reality is, is we're never going to be able to construct an $8 million trail in one go, so the small portions of 600,000 will at least help us gets, you know, get going and at least get the bridges, a mile of trail here or there. And we're hopeful that if we do it in phases, that we'll be able to get the, the funding throughout a three or four year period.
How much of the trail goes in and out of other towns?
So, no, no, so we're, we're only in South Windsor for this trail, however, it does, but.
Connecting communities.
Correct. So that's why we, we are working with the neighboring communities to kind of get their support because the more support from their town as well, there's a few communities that this would, if we are successful with it, it'll continue through their town and they'll be able to get the funding hopefully for it. Manchester is already up to our line of where we would be. I don't know if there's another community that's connected yet besides that, no.
Would that qualify us for some state grants and state funding?
Correct. So the Recreation Trails Grant is through the state, so we're hoping to get that. And the funding that was just passed, it's supposed to be a several year grant so that way we would be able to get the funding every year if we're actually making progress and if we get that right support. So we're hopeful for that, as it would be a nice thing for our town to have that. In terms of programs, so we're in the thick of it for basketball. So we started basketball, like the actual games, right after the holidays. They started practices right before the holidays, but now they're in the game sessions. The games for our beginner divisions have provided learning opportunities so far for the youth and our junior and senior divisions had some great down to the wire games to kind of kick off the season. We also have been having adult open gym, again, for pickleball, volleyball, throw ball. Great free opportunities to South Windsor residents. Our gym at night is packed, which is really exciting to see. And then men's basketball have also been having a great season. So all in all, all of our gym spaces are being utilized to their fullest potential, which is nice to see and it also makes a case for why we do need some more gym space in the town. Yes.
Just a question on the open gym, this might be an obvious question, but if community members want to participate, where can they go to find out the schedule of what's happening during open gym times?
Yep, you can always call the office and they can provide it. We will kind of be posting that in our brochure for when we'll be trying to do open gyms. And anytime that it is being offered, you can kind of just walk on in and sign in and you're all set to go. I know that throw ball, for example, they've been offering that time. A lot of people don't know the sport, so they've been just welcoming anyone in to kind of play and try the sport. Pickleball is also a very welcoming community. They will kind of just let you pick up the paddle and go. So you don't have to have any experience in the sport either, which is nice. And then in terms of our, our holiday season, we did a lot of programming. We did Grinchmas, which had over 400 families attend the, the annual event. They pretty much got to meet the Grinch, they got to do some fun activities. It was a jam packed gym and there was a lot of happy families to see the Grinch. Our letters to Santa, so throughout the month of December, we had the mailbox up in Nevers Park, right next to the large tree. And we had 559 letters to Santa this year that, yep, that we brought in through the department. So we were very thankful for all of our. So we were very thankful for all of our North Pole helpers that made that happen. And then we also did events such as Skate with Santa, which we had over 160 guests and 65 toys donated. And then we had Sensory Santa Visit, which is the opportunity for youth with disabilities to be able to come hang out and meet Santa. So we had nine youth come to that event this year. For Mary and Bright, we had 25 participants enter this contest. And we kind of posted on our website, we had a nice graphic, if anyone was able to do the light tour. And we identified our winners for that. It's a super fun, kind of festive activity. So if anyone wants to do that next year, it's a nice little way to be festive around the town. And then we did a Monday night social club party on Monday, December 19th. And they were able to have a surprise with the fire chalk with Santa's helpers. So everyone always loves that event. In terms of what we're up to next, we have preschool registration tomorrow for session C and D. Residents are only tomorrow, and then non-residents will be on January 19th. We are expecting to fill those fairly fast. So if anyone is watching this and wants to register, please be on right at 8:00 AM. And then, other than that, everything else is going really fantastic. In terms of, you know, Fourth R, participants are happy. We are full with that program. All the rest of our sports are doing really well. In terms of staff, we have hired a new full-time athletics recreation supervisor named Jordan. So Jordan has worked for our department for several years as a site director for Fourth R and other various part-time capacities. And, you know, we're excited to have him. He's jumped right in. He's been at all the basketball, volleyball, just kind of making himself visible and getting to know everyone. And then we are trying to plan to post the one vacancy that we have within the next month for aquatics as that season is approaching us. And then for our brochure, we are going to be sending out our spring and summer brochure in March. So we're working on that. We're already kind of have all of our programs and events pretty much solidified all the way out through August, which is crazy to think, because we are in January, but that is how recreation goes. So we're excited. We have a lot of fun offerings coming for the community this spring and summer. And we are also working on our budget for fiscal year 2024. So we will be working on that, submitting that budget at the end of January, and John and I will be presenting our proposed budget in the spring. Besides that, I'm gonna let John speak on some of our programs. And I also want to give a quick shout out to the Parks Crew. They have been doing a fantastic job at, well, everything, but working at Old Orchard Hill to make sure that we are able to do some small touch-ups and renovations in-house. So they've been a really great asset to have, and they've been very motivated to get it done for us.
Thank you, Molly.
Good evening. Quick parks update. Environmental Services donated a shed for us. It's a eight by 30 shed. They had it at their facility, and they also had, Howard Slater helped us with the two loaders, and we walked it across the street to the John J. Mitchell Fairgrounds at Ry. We're hoping that that'll serve as a, an electrical drop, and we can bring the power into there, because one end of the shed is already at electrical service. So that'll help to maybe get the fairgrounds, get some electricity into it, so we don't have to bring something all the time down for the Wapping Fair and some of the other venues that are there. It's still gonna be an extremely costly venture, but it's a good start. The COVID Memorial is, is complete. It's at the Donnelly property. And I don't know if anybody's ever sat there for a sunset, but the Donnelly property has a very nice, very nice sunset. So you can go there and sit and reflect. We've been working with some different vendors for the splash pad. We, we're, right now, we're dealing with design professionals. They're putting the, the design and everything together for, for the splash pad that is moving forward nicely. As, as Molly said, the crew is over at Orchard Hill. We're doing a lot of cleaning, some painting, things that we can do that, that aren't too, too costly because of budgetary constraints. But the crew is doing a great job over there. We've, we've got, we've made some, some big progress already, and it already looks a lot, a lot better than it did. They're making it a lot brighter. We're doing some painting and things like that. Moved some offices around, removed some temporary walls that were left there that didn't need to be there, and some other miscellaneous things that just did not need to be in the building. We've been doing some work over at the Little League complex. We installed another set of batting cages behind the permanent structure that's there. And they put another, a backstop for pitching with nets. And then we also are, along Little League C has always been a little bit of a, I don't want to say a hazard, because that's a terrible word for me to use, so. It's, it's been a little tough, because the, the parents like to sit along the fence line and watch a game. It's always been a very short fence. It's been a four-foot fence. We mimic the left field side. It has an eight-foot fence along there, so we mimic that. So that's gonna make that play a lot safer for the people that are on the, on the sidelines and for the coaches and kids. They're working on that right now. We made some major improvements to the Ry Street parking lot over by the basketball court. It used to be basically a, I'll call it a dirt slash gravel parking lot. We took some millings over there recently. We regraded the parking lot, and we covered it all with millings and regraded it. It's gonna, come summertime, when it gets hot, it'll firm up, and we'll reroll it again. And that'll be a, a nice improvement to that over there. Like, we did, one thing we did, we do, is we cut a PO today for musco lighting. We're gonna move forward with the Ry Street retrofit lighting, which will be a huge improvement to the facility. And now with the, with the EverSource cost going up, will be a big benefit to the town. The trails throughout town, we have some guys out in the trails every day, working, cutting all the dead wood down, bringing it out to the edge of the trail, and then we'll get rid of that as we go along. And that's in all of our trail systems. We started, we finished the Bird Sanctuary already. I believe they're over at Wapping now. They'll go through that, and they'll go through the rest of the trail systems and everything. The one thing nice about having a mild winter, not everybody, not everybody loves snow. I certainly don't really like it, but we get a lot of work done in the winter when it's not snowing. It gives us a time to catch up and do some projects that we don't normally get done. And the, the last thing, or last two things is, we did, the crew did some major cleanup over at King Street Pond. We took down a lot of dead trees, a lot of trees that were laying there. We, we mowed the lawn area. We met the two homeowners next door. They were thrilled to see what we were doing. If you go down the hill, if you've ever been to King Street Pond, if you go down the hill, there's a roadway that goes, goes down. There's a 24-inch pipe that's starting to collapse, and it's starting to eat away at the roadway and the embankment. We're gonna remove the pipe. We're gonna divert the water temporarily, and we're gonna replace that pipe. We're gonna fill it back in and restore it, so it's not, it's almost like it's trying to make the bank turn, and the bank wants to go straight. So we've talked, we'll talk to inland wetlands about that, but it's just gonna be the same pipes going back in place. But the problem is, is that about six or eight feet under the pipe, there's a hole in it, and it, and it keeps eroding the ground below it. So we want to get that before we lose that roadway in there. And then we did take, today, we had interviews for a maintainer one position that we have for an opening. We had a few good candidates. They'll be having second rounds, will be next week. And hopefully, we get a, a person from that to join our crew. And other than that, we're doing really good. Really proud of the crew. They do a great job, as they always do. I have just 12 fantastic employees.
Thank you, John.
And my manager, Dave.
Any questions? Okay. Discussion topics, master plan. So we're working on that? That's not tonight, correct? Is there any conversation for master plan tonight?
I mean, I think that in terms of working on that subcommittee will really help once we start to get some headway, because although it's technically more aimed towards a building, it'll also come out with some new programs and some new projects that are gonna need to be identified. So I think that we're gonna be able to update the master plan through that as well.
Thank you. Are there any motions that we could entertain now? George?
Couple things. The South Windsor Little League is looking to get a press box storage shed put up at the high school softball field. They have an architect design the building already, but we don't have any cost outs for it. So hopefully, by next meeting, I'll have something for you guys, or I'll give it to Molly to hand out, just so we can have an idea what it's gonna cost. And then the other thing is, I've reached out to a couple guys in, in the area that build, or set up disc golf courses. And both of them are interested in putting something at Lawrence Road Park. So hopefully, by this summer, we'll have something temporarily set up.
Which park?
Lawrence Road. Which we've talked about before. I've talked to these guys. So I'm working with those guys. I'm gonna send them the information for the park, and we'll start going forward with that. Because we already have the basket, so it's mostly just setting it up and then working with John's crew to get it set up.
Any idea what's going on with the Willowbrook property? The Willowbrook property?
No, I've heard nothing about that.
Okay, thanks. Any motions that we should entertain? Is it seconded?
Second.
Second motion, adjourned, seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.